Oh, yeah. I didn't see, I didn't notice that.
Are you ready? Call this meeting in order. This is the regular meeting of the Stewart Utility Board for February 10th. We'll have a roll call. Brian? I'm here. Shirley?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
And Kim?
Kim?
She's not here. First item on the agenda is our agenda approval and consent agenda. So if the board members take a look at the bills and minutes from the last meeting, and some of these ready, you can make a motion. Oh, the consent agenda will include the minutes of the regular reading, a financial statement as of 1/31/22, and bills as presented. Is there any questions about it? If not, do your motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Craig. Seconded by Shirley. We'll proceed to vote Brian.
Yes.
I vote aye. Shirley?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
And Kim's not here either. Next item is Xenia Rural Water Rate Increase. Another one.
Hi, I'm Gary Benjamin, General Manager for Xenia Rural Water. Fortunately, we have some bad news. Each year, as you may recall, Xenia staff calculates the cost of providing water service to our bulk customers in the city of Stewart. From those cost of service studies, then staff makes recommendations to the board regarding rates for the following year. The letter on the first page that I handed out was something we sent out to the board earlier. And it kind of summarizes the cost of service study results for Stewart, as well as then the recommendation that the board made for the rates for 2022. The second page that I include there just gives you a little more detail on how the cost of service study is generated. The first set of data there calculates the cost that we incur on the operation and maintenance of our booster station. And we call it the Service Area A Booster Station. That is the booster station that ultimately provides the water service to Stewart there. As you can see from the SBA booster total there, that cost increased four cents per thousand gallons from 2021 to 2022. The next figure after that total there is the Des Moines Water Works wholesale rate. That's the rate that they charge us for the water we purchase from them. That is the water that ultimately comes to Stewart. As you can see from that column there, the yellow highlighted number, their rate's going up 39 cents per thousand gallons for the year. The next cost figure after that is the wheeling charge. The water that we buy from Des Moines Water Works actually goes through the water industry, and then to us, and then to Stewart. They have some pumping costs for the two pumping stations, electrical maintenance costs of that, as well as some chlorine or chemicals that they add to chlorine the water. Luckily, that cost did not change in 2021. Then the final cost figure on that chart there is the administrative overhead. That cost includes the cost of our office, office operation, when you're reading billing, corporate insurance, et cetera. And that cost actually dropped 15 cents per thousand gallons from the previous year. If you look down that volumetric total, the actual cost of service to provide water to Stewart was $4.63 per thousand gallons. When it came our turn as staff to make recommendations to the board, we did not go with the total cost of service study of 4.63. We recommended that the rate increase only be that amount that Des Moines Water Works increased our rate, so that's 39 cents per thousand gallons. With that, the rate change would then go from $4.01 per thousand, as it was in 2021, to $4.40. From that, we use and setting the rate is very similar to what we've done with Stewart in the past. I have a box here at the bottom of that second page. And you can see the cost of service study figures versus the rate that actually the board approved. And those rate increases pretty much mirrored what rates increases we were getting from Des Moines Water Works. There is some possible light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak, regarding future water rates. I visited with, Des Moines Water Works had a changeover. Past CEO passed away, and so they elevated the person that I used to work with when I worked at Des Moines Water Works, the CEO. So I had an opportunity to visit with him and two of his staff and just relate the concern about these water rates that they did pass on to us. Those are just getting to be a little bit disconcerting as far as the amount of rates that they have and every year occurrence. They have an outside entity do their cost of service studies now. And one of the suggestions that that firm made was that they look at, for wholesale customers, they look at not just how much water they buy, but they want to be suggested that they look at what their peak to average day ratio is. If you have a peak that's five times your average, you're only using that peak water typically two or three months out of the year. The rest of the year, they have to maintain that equipment, but they're not selling water from that. And so they're recommending a surcharge for those entities that have a fairly high peak to average day water ratio. Xenia's is only like 1.8. And a big part of that is because of the metal. Ethanol plant out here uses a continuous 700, 800 million gallons a day, and so they don't fluctuate much. So the rest of the usage, even though it might fluctuate, it's kind of bladed down with that water use from the ethanol plant. They came close to taking that advice this past year for next year's rates, but they voted to one more time, one more year, let other entities, those entities that have the peak, kind of get used to the idea that they might hit the surcharge added on to it rather than just dump it on in one year. So I fully expect next year that they'll look at, seriously look at incorporating that surcharge for that peak. Those entities will then put more revenue into Des Moines Water Works pot, which means they'll have to get less revenue from entities like Xenia that have lower ratios. I'm hopeful that if our rate increases in the future, that there'll be much less than the rate increases we've seen this last three or four years. That's all I have for tonight. I'll take any questions that you might have at this time.
Yeah, I have one. I'm reading the Xenia District minutes. Has moved on second to approve no rate increase for residential and commercial water consumption in 2022. You have a motion say don't increase it.
That is for our normal residential customers, just the average rural customer out there. The cost of providing water service for them has not increased to the extent that a majority of the water that we sell from Des Moines Water Works goes between yourself and the plant, or the ethanol plant out there. So we do a cost of service study that's more general for just the residential customers. And by that, we look at what are the revenues coming in and what are our expected expenses, whether they be operation maintenance or capital expenses. And those rates are sufficient enough to maintain those rates. Those rates are quite a bit higher than what you're seeing as a bulk customer.
But they're not buying it, not either, right?
That's correct.
So in you audit?
And we, and I'm sorry for interrupting, but we actually have five different systems in our whole utility. One is the water that we get from Des Moines Water Works. We also purchase water from Madrid. We purchase water from Boone. And then we have two of our own treatment tanks, one by Woodward and one by Stratford.
What other communities do you provide water for? You said you're a larger customer? I'm new to the board, so I apologize.
Sure. In the Des Moines system, our only bulk customers, if I call right, are the ethanol plant in Stewart. All of our other bulk customers and franchise customers are in our other service territories. And so the cost of service that you presented here today is strictly just for the Des Moines system.
Okay, in your audit here, you say you have sufficient cashes available, Boone's concrete, and in the future, there's a district to meet cash flow needs for operating, debt financing, and capital obligation.
Yeah, overall. Overall, system-wide, for all five systems, that is the statement.
I guess not just last year, but for the last two years, you haven't raised rates on residential consumer, or residential commercial, is that right?
That's correct.
But you raised it on us 9% last year, from what I understand?
It's directly tied to the water that we buy from Des Moines.
But is that sustainable to me from a consumer perspective? Do you think that's reasonable?
I don't. That's why I had my meeting with Des Moines Water Works and told them flat out, I said, you just can't quit Boone, you gotta quit Boone. We've got, sorry for interrupting, we've got customers like you that have it all, another alternative. You can fire up your treatment plant tomorrow and quit taking water from us. And I explained that to them. The ethanol plant out there, if we start to keep, and they go through the same cost of service, but even you do, their rates are identical to what you're doing. They have, they might decide, hey, this is too expensive, we're gonna drill a well and produce our own water. And I pass that on to them, because that's why if they don't buy the water from us, then why provide the water from Des Moines Water Works?
The demographics in this town are 50 to 60% hell of mine. And I guess when you're looking at an annualized raise of 2 or 3%, you go buy gas, drive to Des Moines to work, go to the grocery store, you buy everything. People aren't getting a 2 or 3% raise, they're getting a 9% increase in anything else. So I don't understand how you could even present this, frankly, which is to me. Are you able to show the financial spread that Chip provided?
The only thing I can say is those are direct costs. You don't see any 10% profit.
But you can shift those costs to residential consumer, and you're not doing that in your business model. You're only focusing on your bulk customers. So you could actually spread your rate increases.
Those are direct costs that we incurred.
I get that. I understand, I get that. We're not gonna agree on this, I'm fine with that. But first of all, I'd like to commend these guys right here for not passing the costs that are passed on from you to our customers, and they should be commended for that. That's what this data tells us right here. They're passing one-third of the cost, if that, to the utility, right, that customers in our town. That's what's going on.
But we can't do that every year, 9%. You know, so we need to talk.
I totally agree with you. And that's why I sat down with the new senior Des Moines Water Works, this chief operating officer, this chief financial operator. I told him, I wrote a letter to their board, and I can share that letter with you guys. I told them, they just cannot keep doing this, because we're gonna lose customers. We're gonna get really mad customers, or both. And so, but these are our direct costs, and it would not be fair for us to give you water at a less cost and then pass that cost to other people. We do the cost analysis for everybody. It's just different here, because it's Des Moines Water Works water. The other cities that we purchase water from, they've not had these same type of rate increases that Des Moines Water Works have.
Oh, isn't it?
They control their costs better than Des Moines Water Works do. I, you know, I don't like to speak the ill of the dead, but the previous CEO at Des Moines Water Works was not concerned with water rate increases. And that's not the approach that you should take as a utility that provides water that you have pretty much a capital audience. And I used to work for Des Moines Water Works, and when he became CEO, I left. I did not agree with that philosophy. Luckily, the current CEO and his staff are not of that same approach that the previous CEO was. So that's why I'm very hopeful that the water rate increases are beginning to stop, or they're gonna be much smaller than what we've seen in the past.
And we appreciate that, but we want some kind of guarantee to that. Guarantee 9% and you're willing to share that agony with Boone Stewart. Can we lock that increase away for the next five years? So we don't have to go every year and sit and keep going back and forth.
It's not my decision.
And I understand, yes, you're like us, rely on too between you and the customer. We all have to answer to our ego, you know, because we have citizens here living on fixed payment. We need to look out for them. And you are a liar's own too, so what can we do now to get to a resolution?
The only thing I can say is if you want, I would encourage you to draft a letter and send it to the CEO, General Manager, and the board of Des Moines Water Works. They're the ones that control our boosters, to the extent.
That would be your role to do that, not ours.
I've already done it, sir. I've tried, and I even told them, you guys have an opportunity to fire a treatment plant and take zero gallons from us. If you take zero gallons from us, you're taking zero gallons from Des Moines Water Works. I tried. I mean, I don't sit on their board, I don't have any other input other than talking to their staff and talking. I wrote, and I'll share the letter that I wrote to the board.
I guess what I don't understand, what's the distribution of your revenue from residential consumer to, or excuse me, residential, residential, commercial, and bulk? What are the other classes?
That's it. We have residential, which is.
I mean, what percentage is bulk?
I have those off the top of my head. I can get that information for you.
All I get is that is if you spread your cost, you've got your residential and your commercial getting no increases over the last two years. The citizens of Stewart have gotten a double-digit increase. You would think that you would spread all fixed costs across all customer classes, not just hitting your largest or substantial. I don't know what your revenue distribution is, I'm just saying, it's very, you know, these guys have been doing this for years, and if you go back, Chip's got this all the way back to, you know, really just 2019, but, I mean, they're.
2016.
Yeah, but, but variant, you skip a few years, I was getting that. If you aggregate 2019 to current, I mean, you're upwards of 30% proposed and implemented. And then if you look at what, can you show them what the board's done? If you can flip to that next one? Isn't that the bottom row, Chip?
It is.
Okay, so you're looking at half of that. So the board is passing half of the cost. So that means we're having to internalize that expense. Are you guys doing that? If you're getting a 9% increase on your bulk water, you're not becoming more efficient with more customers, because if your audit says you've got more customers, right?
We got more customers, but they're not all in the Des Moines system.
I understand.
They have five different systems.
I think your costs are spread across all of them, right? You don't go borrow money to go.
Not the money, not the money that we pay Des Moines Water Works. That does not go to the rest of our systems that own it, most of the customers in the Des Moines system.
If you go to your investment bank, you're gonna borrow money based off of all your revenue, not just the revenue you're selling to Stewart, right? Do you understand what that's mean?
Well.
No, I mean, it's very simple. I have this revenue, I'm going to this bank based off of this revenue, not Stewart's revenue, all of Xenia's revenue. That's what the investment bank is lending you money on to grow your revenue, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so if I get new customers over here, then I'm going to raise the rates across all of them, not just the single guy in, you know, in one area. That's what I don't understand, why, you know, I think I've made my points.
Yeah, and I, to follow up with that, you know, you look at the whole picture. If you receive stimulus, which I think we definitely see the stimulus, should go to the whole company. Not just to us, but to you.
We didn't get any stimulus.
I was, I was, I was.
Some people get it, and some people don't.
So what can we do?
I do not control the Des Moines Water Works board, I do not control what they charge us for water. As you can see in this information I passed out, the total increase in cost for 2021 was 28 cents. 39 cents came from Des Moines Water Works. So our cost that we have control of actually dropped by 11 cents per thousand gallons. That's all I can control. How much do we spend on our infrastructure to get the water to you? And what are our overhead costs? That's the only thing that I and the rest of the staff at Xenia can control. The 39 cent increase from Des Moines Water Works, I have no control of that. That's like you going to the gas station one day, it's 3.06, the next day it's 3.30. You didn't have any control of that. I don't have any.
But they sold pizza a higher price to offset the gas increase, right? So that's what I'm trying to say. Why can't you hit all customers, not just specifically target one, one customer class?
Well.
And you're giving the other folks a rate for two years. If everybody's getting a 9% increase across all your customers, I mean, that's all I'm getting at, is I don't understand how you, you know what I mean? You're charging 9%. I get it, your input costs from Des Moines is higher. You would still think you would blend that, so it wouldn't be such a shock, a sticker shock, to one particular customer.
Well, if I have to go to a bulk customer up north that does not have anything to it Des Moines Water Works water, and I have to tell them that I have to raise their rates because Des Moines Water Works raised their rates, I don't think those customers are gonna be there at the time.
But when their fixed costs go up by 9%, and you say, hey, guess what? We spread it across everybody, everybody's getting a 2.5 or 3. They're gonna understand that versus a, it was 9% this year, 9% last year, and, you know, I mean, what confidence do we have it's not gonna be 9% next year?
You've got as much confidence as I do.
Right.
All I can do is go to them and tell them, and tell them what the potential impacts of these rate increases are. If they choose to act on it, that's great. If they choose to say, yeah, you're mine.
I just, Gary, when's this increase gonna be effective?
I think for the contract is 120 days.
120 days after you get a notice. So can we ask you to revisit this with your board and say that there's, you know, I'm just asking? Can you go back to the board and revisit this and say?
We'll visit next month.
This is a highly contentious, back-to-back yearly increase, and.
I can do that, but I would not hold a lot of hope on that. Just from the standpoint, this is our direct cost for my water to, we're not adding, there's no hidden fees or added increases to line our pockets or to support some of the.
Nobody's suggesting any of those things. It's just, it's a back-to-back increase when other customers are not getting that same increase, they're getting zero. And so if I'm up in Madrid, like.
Well, you're kind of, you're kind of comparing apples and oranges, because our rates to the residential customers are not $3.04 and $4.04 a thousand gallons, they're already higher than that.
Right. I think what Brian's trying to say is, water is water, exactly, you know? Very simply, thank you very much.
What I'm saying is that you're not comparing apples and, they're not paying you $4.04, they're already paying more than that.
But we're using more than that, paying you a lot more than what they're paying you, right?
Not on a per gallon basis.
I didn't say it, I'm talking total revenue. Right, what, you just said that we're.
Well, I can't, I can't sell something cheaper because I'm selling more of it. I can't sell.
Then Walmart wouldn't be in business then, right?
I guarantee you, they're not taking a loss.
That's, okay, I get it, but at the same time, Target's selling the same thing probably a little bit more than Walmart, right? But if something goes up.
Because their input costs are less.
Yeah, but if.
Our input costs are going up.
Right, but they're still one business, right? Water is water. That should be in the minutes.
When you look at any retail company, you know, one cost goes up, they don't go, well, this particular product, we're gonna jack the price up 500% due to our input costs. They're gonna blend that cost over all these different products that they sell to keep the shock of that one particular product being completely, you know, raising costs for that certain scenario. So that's what we're saying here, is why aren't, why isn't Xenia doing that same approach where one particular product, i.e. the Des Moines Water Works' cost, has gone up, but you blend it across your other customers, is to not provide a shock to water multiple customers?
And I agree with you, because in your audit we wrote, you said you have sufficient cash. So this is you saying, not particularly you, but this is what I mean. If you have sufficient cash.
Absolutely correct. But that cash did not come evenly from other people, from all people, because we have different rates for different styles of people. You're already getting a bulk rate discount. You mentioned always overwater fee, we do. And that's why your rate is less than the person out on the street. For a residential customer, what is it, 60 bucks?
60 bucks, 60 dollars for a minimum of 2,000 gallons. It's 13, $13 per thousand thereafter, it's like 10,000, and then five, $5 per thousand.
So there's already a building bulk discount just because of the bulk party. We don't, we don't charge it near the same dollar per thousand gallons as we do for residential customers.
But again, water is water, rate increases, rate increases. The normal citizen is not gonna listen to us telling them that's.
They've been listening to us for a long time about that, Gary. You know, we hear all the time that Stewart's water rates are too high. I will give you this, it's really good water. And if we were gonna do the other things, like fire up our wells and start pumping our own water, a lot of things, and I'm sure you realize, a lot of things are gonna happen. We tried that a couple of years ago, three or four years ago, for 30 days, and we started getting all kinds of complaints about what's wrong with the water, because it wasn't good water. And, you know, like, but at some point, you know, you gotta, you gotta squeak. And I think that's what we're doing here, is trying to get somebody to understand that, yes, we're one of your two largest, you know, one of Xenia's two largest customers, but at some point in time, that's, you know, we have to begin questioning it. And, you know, I guess, gonna ask a real difficult question of you. Is there an alternative to Xenia?
I would answer that yes, but it's also gonna be very pricey. To build a new treatment plant now, we're probably talking $8 to $10 per gallon.
Okay, and I forgive you if it looks like I'm digressing here, but I've been reading a lot about the new water authority that's being discussed in the city. Obviously, that's gonna, because it's Des Moines Water Works, it's gonna impact you, Des Moines.
We have the option to join or not join, simply that way. If we don't join, then we deal with Des Moines Water Works like we've always dealt, which means we have no say in the table.
Now, you know, from my reading, it explains that they're not doing this because they're gonna get, they're gonna create a better water rate. They're doing it to limit the increase in water over time. If they combine and build this treatment plant, you know, these group of communities get together and they build their own treatment plant, then in the long run, it's gonna hold costs down. I've been of the opinion for a long time that, you know, as much as people would like that to happen, water rates are not gonna go down.
I think they'll attenuate somewhat, just because of the size, you know, supposedly the bigger the size, the better the cost. The biggest thing and the biggest motivation for that whole Central Iowa Water Works discussion is the fact that once Des Moines Water Works started producing and selling more water outside the city than they did inside the city, then that's when the wholesale customers start saying, wait a minute, we're more than 50% of your water produced, why don't we have a seat at the table? Because Des Moines Water Works comes out with these rates. You can go to the board meeting and you can talk to them, but they're gonna do what they do.
Gary, is, whether Xenia chooses to join that or not, is that because of our volume? Is that something we could join?
No, you have to be a direct customer of Des Moines Water Works. And at this point in time, our board hasn't made a decision. I'm supposed, I'm scheduled to take a regulation to them at our February board meeting, December 24. meeting, which is on 24th. Today, West Des Moines, Des Moines, Urbandale, and Waquis involved indicated, I mean, it's not a final yes or no, it's, it's just that you want to be involved in generating, they call it 28F agreement, uh, that will operate this, uh, new entity.
What, what kind of, uh, what kind of potential is there from your standpoint that it might moderate water increases in the future?
I think it's got good potential. I think that's why you see Waquis, West Des Moines, and Urbandale joining because they want a seat at the table. If you have a seat at the table, then you have a better opportunity to have impact on budget and water rates. When they came out with the very first agreement, draft agreement about how this thing would work, uh, they said, well, this new board would, would approve water rates. And so my first comment was, that's not enough. And they said, what do you mean? I said, well, if the budget is already set, generate water rates is a math problem. You know how many gallons you're pumping? You know how much you budgeted to spend? Take those two numbers and generate a water rate. I said, that board has, has to have input on the budget process, not just the rate process. And so that is now in the, in the final agreement that everybody's voting on is in there that this board would have input on the budget and not just the rates. I mean, I, I just want to point out, it's in here, but I just want to point out the cost of service that, that really our cost to provide water service to you last year is $4.62. We're not raising it to the 4.63. We took a hit on what we did and only raised it by the rate increase that we got from Des Moines Water Works. Biggest reason for doing that is I don't want you guys to do this. I don't want you to have to put up with the water quality change that you're talking about. So we're trying to, to smooth the peaks a little bit by just saying, hey, we're only going to raise our direct costs. That's money that we have to get from Water Works. There's no other, there's no other place to get that water, that money from.
And I apologize if you come here and get grilled.
Oh, no, that's fine. If I was sitting in your seat, I'd be asking the same question.
But we're going to get grilled too.
Oh, yeah. I, I totally, I, I, I will absolutely send you that letter that I sent to the Des Moines Water Works board when they announced what the rates were going to be. Cause I had, I, I tried to talk with their staff and I tried to, I tried to get them to, to do that rate change this year where they took more money from those people that have these big peaks. And they said, well, it's, it's might be too late to just give them 68. No, there's one way to do it next year. And, uh, so then I, when they made that decision that that's what they're going to recommend on board, the board doesn't have to approve that, needless to say. They could have picked the other alternative. I wrote a, a letter to the board members and told them that, you know, these kind of rate increases, we, we have the potential to lose almost two-thirds of the water that we buy from them. Between you and the, and the Menlo ethanol plant out there, that's a significant amount of the water that we actually purchased from Des Moines Water Works. You know, that's doing, that's all I knew how to try is.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
Sure.
Um, what is going to be your recommendation to your board about the, about the water rate authority?
Um, I, I am leaning towards at least going through this first part of it, but that allows us to at least have input on this final agreement. Right now, we just had a draft agreement on how this board's going to work.
Because most of the agreements are.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I want to at least be involved in that process. The actual, I think the timetable was not until October when you actually have to finally, finally say, hey, I'm joining, because it's going to cost us around $73,000 to join. Uh, they base it on the percentage of water that we buy from them versus the total. And we buy, I think, 4% of the water that they sell. And they want to try to create this $2 million fund and start the internal.
I guess, with the indulgence of the board, is this something that we can table for a month? Maybe they get a little more information? Gary can bring us back, you know, whatever he can get from, from his board or Des Moines Water Works or whatever. I guess I'd just like to, this is another significant increase, Gary, and it's something we have to be very careful with.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. So, I mean, it doesn't only impact our sales too, but it impacts the, the Menlo plant out there. It impacts all the, uh, bulk customers that we have in this city. A lot of those are doing it too, but we have the same medium coming up with Menlo, uh, ethanol.
Okay. Who gave me the six meetings?
So I guess the question, I guess I'm trying to get my arms around it, whoever you want to call it, is why you don't blend your costs? And you're telling me that it's.
That gets a good point.
Because of, you know, it's because of your past costs. You're taking, uh, Des Moines Water Works and throwing it at the Des Moines Water Works customers, basically. So we're basically a customer of Des Moines Water Works whereas Maggert's not. Is that fair?
That's fair.
So, and you're treating those costs in, cost increases separate? Usually exclusive water lines, your water source.
Yeah.
Fair? Okay. So I'd like to understand if you could, uh, 30-day review or whatever, come back, understand if that's willing to be changed and, you know, this 9% can be blended? And if not, what the answer would be? Um, secondly, I guess if this can be a phased approach that ASH asked for, um, you know, is there a lock that you can put on this so it's not a yearly increase and, you know, we can phase a 9% in? If you don't think of a lock next year, can we count on Xenia to say that so we can put nine, John said this too, make nine over two or three years? So I, I don't know, that's.
That's, really, Jim, I think I agree with mine. We just need something to help us deal with a lot and try to explain why we do, you know, because there's already, uh, one increase that the board has to deal with it, that the customers are not happy. So between now and next month, maybe we can, uh, work together. Be willing to answer any few questions, be willing to attend any few meetings, both members willing to do that to reach that kind of agreement between each other that mine just indicated, even if we have no choice but increasing rate, can we lock that way? And we'll help us explain to the customers and we'll help us do our budget too. We've been taking a loss for the last few years, you know, trying to help our customers. So.
And so we've tried to grow, the community's grown up. They're here in Guthrie County, Stewart's the only town that's grown in population. So we're giving you more customers as well. You know, the city side, we're able to lower the tax rate because we've got a lot of tax things. Well, the same concept should exist with the water concept, but it can't because it, you know, there's not, this perpetual expense keeps coming up, and these guys have helped cushion that for, I don't know how many years you can go back.
I guess we're just asking for a little bit of cushion too.
Yeah.
It would be highly appreciated. We appreciate you working with us and I know it's not your fault and we're just, just having that we have to talk to you.
So it'd be nice if I could come back one year and say the rates are going to be on them.
I know, so. We have a smelly.
I said it would be nice. I didn't say it would re-listen.
Go ahead. We need a motion to table that.
Before you do that, real quick, what I think I'll do is I'm going to, I'm going to try to work with, uh, Ted Morgan and the others two chiefs and just find out from them, can they give me any kind of gear sheet as to what they're looking for rates? Cause that's, that's what we're really controlled by. I, I should control that. If I was still there, maybe I had some input, but I'm not there anymore. But I, I will reach out to them and just say, hey, I've asked this, I've been asked this question by one of our bulk users, and is there anything that they can tell me crystal ball, what do they see, uh, for the water rates?
Are we bulk users or wholesale users?
I'm a wholesale. You're a bulk user.
Wait, in our agreement, it say wholesale.
Right, I think they're wanting the same. We are, we are called wholesale from Des Moines Water Works. All of the customers that we have like you, we refer to them as bulk customers.
Okay, because I know a lot of this discussion. There's no. It's two words because I know you, the board are moving crazy freight on the port, but we are wholesale.
Yeah. We don't even have a wholesale rate. I mean, it's all the, all the people that we sell wholesale water to, we call them bulk customers. So there's really no, I see bulk customer rate and wholesale customer rate.
I see, but you might want to bring that up to them too, because our agreement say wholesale. And I know there was a motion to increase the rate on the port, not the wholesale.
Yeah, there, there was no motion on wholesale rate, but there is.
And that's most my concern. I'm glad we pulled that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I hear a motion to table this until next year? Go ahead. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
No further discussion, we'll proceed to vote. I vote aye. Shirley.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Kim or Keem, are you with us? And Brian?
Yes.
Are you guys okay if we put that, those rates, those rate increases in the minutes and the public can see that to show until we're done to try to surprise that increase? I mean, but what's been both of them, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Versus what's been.
Yes.
Next item on our agenda is, uh, the number six, Town and Country Insurance, property insurance request.
Hi, so I'm Ted with Town and Country Insurance. Um, I guess we're kind of on the other side of things. We're going to try to, if you guys will allow us, try to keep your costs down. So, um, we've got another company, um, that we can do that's different than what you got now. So if you guys are willing, we'd be, we'd love to go through the work and put some numbers together for you and.
What's a company?
ICAP. I've got some information on ICAP I can leave with the peers so you guys can look it over. Um, if anybody has any questions, I can sure have an answer.
Is there a charge to?
Hold it down.
Where, where does your, where are you getting your information to make the quote?
Uh, we're, well, we're hoping that you guys will provide us with the current policy. That's what we base all our information off of. So then what we normally do is we do a quote like this for anybody, whether it's a homeowner, business owner, whatever. We go off of what you got now so we can, so we can compare apples to apples. And then what we're going to do and what ICAP has already offered to come out and help us do is look at your coverages and make sure that you've got what you need. And if, if you did decide to go with them, I mean, they've got their, their loss control inspectors that they would send out and they look at everything with, with everybody and see if there's anything we can do to improve it too.
So there's no commitment to get it? No, there's no, there's not going to be commitment here. Just.
Now, is, is ICAP a new provider or they've been around for a while?
Oh, it's been around for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, they do have some other towns in the area, Adele, uh, Menlo, Bridgewater, they're all with ICAP right now, so.
And, and I have to be careful here because I, obviously we need to offer them an opportunity to, to quote here. At least that's my feeling. But from the company that we have now to ICAP, they both provide insurance services, but one is entirely different than the other. So.
ICAP is a group coverage.
It's a, it's a pool program.
Yep.
And, um, much, much different than the insurance coverage that we have now. And, and I hope, I hope that you will explain that, Ted.
Yep.
When you come with your proposals.
Yep.
Our current, our, our current carrier, which is EMC, is going to make sure that they distinguish between the two. And sometimes it can get a little confusing, but there is a significant difference between the two, so. And I would also recommend that, um, that both the city and the utility have the same carrier. It's going to make coverage questions a lot easier. Now, it's possible to separate the two, but in my estimation, it's not real wise to do that. So, you know, you.
Yeah, I want to. Are they okay? Okay. So when you go through this process, then you've asked the council for the same process, the same documentation, no charge, no commitment, we'll get through that, track with ASH.
I guess my concern, Ted, is, and like I say, I have to be careful here, but, um, because I was the agent on this account, not this account, but the city account, for over 20 years. And whenever somebody came in to propose new coverage, first thing they wanted to do was get to ASH and get the, the statement of values. And that's my role as, as an agent. That was my role. As an agent, for you to propose a new coverage, that's your role. So it, it's, it's going to be up to ASH and Mike if they want to give that to you, but understand that I would prefer to look at what you, um, to, instead of looking at the values we have, look at it from the standpoint, is this really the right value on that piece of property?
Sure. And that's how we look at any of our business, like I said, whether it's home or commercial. Uh, we always look at the current coverage to make sure we're not missing anything, and then we look to see what we can do to, to make it better, make sure the values are all right, um, try to cover, we try to catch anything like that. Cause anytime that you're quoting, I, I think that's a time, it's, it's time for review. It's a time to make sure you've got what you need.
Okay, um, and, and I would, um, the other thing that always bothered me, even when I was the agent for both the city and the utility, that the council and the board spend an awful lot of money buying insurance. Those premiums are high and they're getting higher for obvious reasons, but, um, for, for us to spend that kind of money and not know what we're deep, what we're buying. So what I would recommend after we get done with this review, that whichever company ends up with the coverage, we have them come in and have a joint meeting with the council and do a work session for, uh, 45 minutes to an hour to have the company rep explain the coverage that we've got so that council members and board members better understand what they spent all this money for.
Two things that he did when you, when you represented, when I was on the council, you came to council meetings to offer input as an agent forward. And that's, that's, that was a huge force, does that chip's here tonight? You know, I mean, it's, it's good to do that. And you did a walkthrough of that, where I remember that as a councilman.
Well, yeah, I, um, yeah, I, and, and I, I represented ICAP to the city council, probably 15 or 20 years ago. And, uh, at that time, the, the council chose to stay with that EMC, even though the cost was probably less.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. The best customers that we have are the ones that know what they have on the cost.
Yep. I always thought that too. So do I hear a motion to, to allow, uh, Town and Country to offer proposals? Oh, Brian, Brian moved it. Do I hear a second?
One second.
Uh, no, no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Um, Brian?
Yes.
And I vote aye. Thank you, sir. Yeah, thank you.
I can leave this. This is just a little bit of, uh, information on ICAP, and it's got Mike's card and Danielle's card. We do have two agents in the office that can, that can service us with both that commercial license, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next item is number seven, uh, the annual report. Is that you?
Budget, annual report.
Is that going to, to receive budget and annual report?
Our annual report, we kind of took care of in the last, we went by the budget. Um, we went through the budget and we made a few changes, but honestly, we didn't change a whole lot from what we had last year. I mean, we tweaked a few things. If we had a little too much here and there, we put it in places where we kind of fell short. So, um, that's kind of what we did. We spent several days going over and Mike and ASH are great help doing the budget. It would, it would be hard for me to do it myself. And, uh, I, I know it was in packets and, I mean, if anybody has any questions, if I didn't be sure, 10 or 3 of us would be the answer.
There is a lot to give, just, just a few. I saw a couple items here. On page five of nine, under revenue, it says total operating revenue. Why did that increase so much? I mean, it went along pretty steady, then all of a sudden, it's increased considerable amount.
It's, it was on the residential sale. Trying to get an estimate of the current year. I'm trying to have at least in twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
And this is on water?
Yes, that's water. So, it all, it all came to the residential with that little bit of significant increase.
Is that some of that's due to the increases we're getting?
Yes.
And probably some increase in, in volume?
Yeah, I hate to say that. Yeah, we were expecting that we go along with the increase, so.
Okay.
If not, it won't be. Yeah. So, it's, it's numbers we can adjust, but we have to see what the future is based on what we need to work with.
Well, part of that is probably on the next page, on page six, where water presume that showed a significant increase. Went along pretty steady until this year and all of a sudden, we're getting a big increase.
Just is doing what's happening, that can change.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm just asking this because I've been through this entire process, but if you push back on this rate increase, they're not present here, but what's the best you can hope for? Do they lock it in for a couple of years or? I mean, there's obviously a quality difference, right, between, you know, old and new processes?
The other thing that we didn't mention, when, if we were to start pumping our own water here from the Redfield wells or from the deep well, you guys can probably speak to this better than I can, but the other thing that you're gonna see happen is rate payers, our rate payers are gonna have to go out and start buying water salt. And that's a pain in the neck. I've had to do that and I think we all have, but those are expenses that they're not gonna want, wanna do either. And it's all gonna come right back here. We're pumping that, that really heavy water, hard water and. So, there's, I think, I think the best we can hope for is just to slow down in the rate.
Lock it.
Forgive me if I get up on my soapbox here. And Warren, I appreciate this, but until the hour legislature grows up here and starts doing something to clean up the water in the state, we're gonna see stuff like this. It's not gonna go away. And, you know, so far, they've, all they've wanted to do is stick their head in the sand and say, "Well, local water rate, utility boards, go ahead and increase your water rates. We don't care," because they don't. And until, until that happens, the best we can hope for is just to moderate these rate increases as much as we can. So, I'll get up on soap.
Okay, so the budget, first, we, we decided all these numbers that we shifted a little bit here and there and tried to go with what we have with Zing and other stuff. So, trying to adjust a little bit the revenue and expense and other stuff. You come to the first page, you will see that the margin of lost water will be making profit, but electric will be showing loss because we steam, considering the underground project, we've not done it yet. So, we have money set aside for that. So, you will see here, chose four hundred and twenty-five.
That accrues over the last year.
So, chose four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars loss. It's not actually loss because we put five hundred thousand for the underground project. It will be profit.
That came from bonds on this, that's not showing.
Yeah. So, there will be living of seventy-four thousand.
Or a problem.
Yeah. So, that's kind of the sales tax and sufficient fund utility deposit that's washed out. That's your budget for next year. Hopefully, we will be able to deal with Zing where we can adjust what we got.
So, if you backed out that five hundred,
you will make a profit of seventy-four thousand.
So, what would that mean, I guess, in your overall perspective?
Yeah, a little bit less than normal, but because we have all this logic that he needs to do, you know, kind of. What he's smart, he is all coming from the reserve to try to balance between what we give to the budget as a case rate and what we can use. And then, it's all the last with the operation. So, you kind of, you see, I've got the city side, we're trying to balance between operation and capital group and all this stuff. We do the same thing on the utility side, you know? That triangle that you see, we always say on that project, is trying to keep the service steady with the way, and then maintain it with the same thing that I'm saying here, you know? He has a lot in operations that he's holding back because of steam, you know, he can't spend. If they allow us to be steady, he will, he has a logic on that that he wants to do.
Sure.
So, every year, we take on some of the logic we need to do that.
And I think that the water projects that were involved in that, water tower and the upgrade to our, to our water lines here, again, I don't think that's gonna modify our, it's gonna make for better water. I mean, there's some, there's some customers up here in Northwest Stewart whose water comes through their line about as big around as a pencil. So, and they've been there for a hundred years, you know? It's time to, it's time to upgrade that. And that's what we're trying to do here now with Chip's help and our engineer. We've come up with a horrendously low interest rate on these, on these loan making. So, you know, it's a, it's a good deal for us, but again, it's not, not gonna save us any money. But we're, we're producing a better product for our, for our customers and that's really what we're trying to do here, so.
All the things we go out, going to the bank, we don't have anything because those guys can, in a corner too, walk in the morning and they go out and you're in the hole and we have to be there. That's unexpected, so.
We, we tried to hold line on that kind of stuff.
Yes, yes.
We got a big trouble.
So, so far, I, I want to thank the county board and the previous boards. And you have seen now with all this demonstration, right, as a new board member, that they, they, oh, I have a good job. The idea that the hope is we continue to do that to the customers and to the town for all these infrastructures that the prime could move and this stuff, so. And it's not ending situation, you just have to keep up with it. So, this is the budget for the next.
Do you need a lawyer?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Okay, do I have a motion on annual budget?
I'll make a motion.
Brian, second? We'll go, how do you vote, Craig?
Aye.
Brian?
Yes.
I vote, I'm Shirley. Okay. Next item is?
Number eight.
Number eight is the annual audit or utility audit.
You see, we'll do it like we would have, so. If you have a good question, like you'd like to answer, I'll do mine.
They never change, they say the same things.
Yeah, they change the day.
Yeah.
Separation of duties, that's always. That's, that's.
They sound micromanaging.
Last time I talked, I had ten, instead of no fifteen.
That's why the insurance policy has a coverage one called the homolog.
We got a good rate that I'm modified, so we got the highest.
Okay.
We need a motion.
Brian?
Need a motion.
Oh, and you're sorry, I need a motion.
All motion.
We'll second. We'll vote, Brian?
Yep.
Shirley?
Aye.
And Craig?
Aye.
And? Oh, the city administrator report, number nine.
Okay, we'll go through this way and with our team names and all this stuff. So, on the financial statements, on the first page, we have our bank statement shows five point two million. On the second page, shows from July first to the end of January, that we made profit of eighty-two thousand. And on page three, shows that we still within the budget, our budget is four point one, we spend half a line. So, we still good with the budget finished that first year.
Do you think that's gonna hold again?
Yeah, I think we will, we'll be just fine. Page four shows what happened in January, we lost three hundred and seventy-four thousand. But that's just because we paid the foundation, less for the increase. We'll bounce back the next week. Next report is just a breakdown of your budget as I stated, it's, we're still within the budget. And our good report of Lincoln account has only two people with the check mark on the right and left on page three. And that takes you to page five, the end of the report. The next report, Lincoln account bearing four, zero, that takes you through the eight pages of the report. There is no change in that report. And then, you go to the next report, it's a payment agreement. We had seven people added with a payment agreement with the check mark, no names. Next report is bearing four payment agreement, we have four with a check mark on the first page, you see one. To page three, you see another two. Last one will be shown on the last page, I go to page six. Next report is the budget billing, no change on the budget billing. Next report is a disease and bankrupt, we have three people. Show on the board with a check mark with our team names. Last report is the offset program, shows you where we add with it. How much we collect it from the offset program. It's here, the report.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Mike.
Um, last item is public forum. Does anybody have anything, Bob?
Pat, I got a question. Can you make a public statement on actually what happened when the power went out the other day, the malfunction? People are asking me and I said, "I don't know."
It was, it was a SIMCO problem, my power provider. They, they dropped the power.
No, I meant on the cat generator, the fire and backup, our own generator.
Oh, why the cat wouldn't run?
Yeah.
Uh, it's just one of those things, it's just a maintenance problem that we need to get fixed. And we had a cat in here yesterday working on it. And we could run it in an emergency if we have to. We had to disconnect some safety button that's connected to it, but they're gonna be back and they're gonna fix it. It was just, it's mechanical, mechanical things break down.
Okay.
And that's all it was.
I know, that happened a quite a few years ago. And another question is, on three eleven North Fremont, I talked to you about this, they put in a new overhead service. Are we gonna force any of the customers when they put in a brand new service to go underground or even go like overhead when they do, do the new construction?
That would be a board decision if we want to go that route. Somebody takes down their service, wants a bigger service or something like that. Wouldn't be a bad idea to make it go back underground because eventually, everything will be underground.
Yeah.
It's, I mean, right now, they, they want to do it overhead because it's cheaper, but. That's something we can talk about with, maybe we bring it up next month.
Well, I think, Pat, you and I have talked about this before and I don't, I understand why you're not really confused about it, but you have to understand that when we did the underground work on the south side, we didn't have the regulations that we have now. Now, if you change service entrance into your house, that has to be inspected by a state, a state inspector. And that costs money. Not only doesn't cost money, it costs money for the inspector himself and then for a certified electrician to come in and do that work. I mean, that's not like, you know, putting a new light switch in your house, you know? So, the south side never had those costs because we did it for them. We just took it in there. You can't do that, state regulation will not allow that. So, we did the underground project on the north side, but most of the houses on the north side from the pole into their house is still overhead. Now, for them to get that underground is gonna cost them.
Three to four.
No, three to four thousand.
Three to four thousand.
Now, we can't, we can't go out and tell them that they have to do that. We can work with them on that, much like you do a, a street improvement or something, you know, add it to, add it to the bill for ten years or whatever, or to their taxes or whatever for ten years. Or, we could go out there, and this is just my own cockamamie idea. We could go out there, instead of providing service entrance directly into their house, put it underground, they can pay whatever it costs us to, to take that from, from our pole into their pole, put it underground, run it up their weatherhead and through their current service entrance. And when they wanted, when they want to complete that job, they can do it on their own. But at least we've helped them somewhat in getting that underground service. And we're not, you know, if we were to do that, we're not gonna be making any money. That is just what it's gonna cost us to do that. I, I remember when I had mine done, I mean, years ago or whatever. And it was, I'm on the north side, it was, I think it was about six or seven hundred dollars for me to do that. It's probably not a lot different now, but that would be an expense to the rate payer to get it, to get it put underground. So, you know, I think there's ways to do that, but it's, in the long run, it makes for a better electrical service if all of this is underground. And my example of that is my son Patrick, who lives down and became a partner. Is absolutely horrified at the thought of the power going out in the middle of the night. It absolutely freaks him out. And I don't know how many times I can tell him, "You really don't have to worry about that, Patrick, because your power lines, usually the way they go, the, the power goes out is when the wind blows and blows the power lines down. Your power lines are underground, so you don't have to probably take away eighty percent of what could go wrong with your, with your electrical service. But the power went out during the day the other day. Now, fortunately, it was during the day and he wasn't that bothered by it. But, you know, and, and a lot of times, it's because of things like Pat said, that come from outside our service area. You know, this was a SIMCO problem that caused the problem the other day. And, yeah, we, we can fire up the, the diesel engine and get the power going. It took us a little longer than we would have liked, but we're working on that too. But I think if we, the closer we get, you know, it's an infrastructure thing. The closer we get to everybody in town, getting all of their service underground, it's gonna be better for everybody, you know? But just to put it underground was a significant increase in service.
Pat, does utilities pay for the boring themselves? I think when I had mine, they bored it in, but I had to pay for the wire. Is that still, do you still do that at all?
If we, we have been putting a lot of them in lately because we've been so swamped with the project that we're doing. But when we do it, I normally take the cost of boring and the cost of the wire and just put it.
I think that's, I think that's what mine was, I think.
Yeah, and we don't make any money out of it. We sell the wire for exactly what we pay for it. It's not a money laundering risk, but it's a service that we do when we have time. For the last three years, working on the overhead, trying to get it all in the high voltage underground is what we're still working on. And we've probably still got six months worth of work to get that done. Once we get that done and everything wrapped up, then we can concentrate more on the secondary services, on the house services. I think the priority right now is to get the rest of the high voltage out of the air because that's where a lot of the trouble comes with. I mean, you can have, you can have tree problems on anything, but it's a lot harder to put it back up. have tree problems on anything, but it's a lot harder to put it back up. You've got to be a lot more careful, there's a lot more involved dealing with high voltage there. So, if we can get that line underground, that'll be, uh, that'll be a really good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I had a couple of comments or thoughts after a recent interaction with the utilities and something from the past, and it made me think. And part of it comes from my background, working in the private sector for, for a lot of years for three different companies. And this latest billing thing, it, and, and first I want to say, I respect everyone up here and the work you're doing as board members or professionals, and I don't want to upset anybody, but I want to give you a mindset of how I saw things differently than I would in the private sector. The recent billing thing that may not have meant anything to you, I was up here to ask what was going on. Town was talking and I, I guess I'm going to say, was there any communication went out from leadership here? I may have missed it. Or maybe you don't know what I'm talking about. But, and I will say, I've been a customer for most of the years since nineteen seventy-six. I've never had a problem with my bill getting here. Couple of times I struggled to pay the dang thing, but I never had trouble. So, it kind of set off alarm, it's in here and I call, I, I would tell you that I didn't get the same feeling as I would have, any of the companies I worked on, alarm bells would have gone off and meetings would have been called and a plan put together to communicate to our customer base if a hundred percent of our customer base or a significant portion was delayed from their normal billing. It would have been something. And the second thing I want to talk about is several years back, when I made, uh, uh, one of the people in the office red-faced, when I talked about, I was surprised there wasn't ability to pay the bills automatically online. I knew about the auto deduct deal, but I'm talking about like I pay a lot of my bills and somebody got kind of red-faced like I was expecting a lot. So, all I'm saying is, I know you guys are battling the outside forces as far as money coming in and all those big things, infrastructure improvements and changes, making things work that maybe work all the time except the day we need it. I know you're fighting all that, but one thing you don't have is the same market element forces on you to give you the inducement to make changes. You may make them out of what you read, and, but the, the market forces aren't the same. You don't stand the risk of losing a customer like a private sector, uh, company does, so therefore, all I'm asking is be aware of that so that you can be thinking, okay, we have to be judicious to think, what should we be doing, what innovations should happen, how can we be more efficient? The marketplace provides that in the private sector, you're either in or out after a period of time. In a, in a regulated utility, uh, it's a little bit different, but you have market forces, it's what custo, what residential or business customers want to be here down the road, but those markets aren't, those forces aren't felt so much. So, it's just a little bit of my thoughts after those experiences. Was I wrong, right or wrong? Did a general, anybody reach out to the public at all about what was going on with the billing being delayed?
A lot of people called.
Well, I know.
It's a soft work.
Internal or external?
Both. Just soft work, it's never happened before, but what are you going to do to soft work except working on it? So, we did work on it and it resolved. So, the company that needs the bill didn't receive it and we have to resubmit it again and that's what was wrong.
You see, in a private sector, and now I'm doing, please take this with respect, folks, in a private sector business, you would have long ago been forced to be able to communicate with your customers like that. You would have had to have an email database, you would have to be there. And no private sector of any size would not have by now released a statement, we're sorry for this delay. It's the fir, and maybe even bragged a little bit, it's the first one we've ever had in memory of anybody in this building. That's something to brag about, that's a pretty consistent system. But to not do anything leaves a puzzling thought amongst all the consumers, you know, is there such an insulating factor that nobody is thinking of us? I know that, I've sat in here and listened to you guys, I know that's not true, but in the future, communication to your customer base is pretty significant and a lot of times it may build some positives that aren't there now for people because they're not hearing much of anything. So, that's it. I say it with a lot of respect for what everybody puts into this.
Site, I mean, what else are options? Like, is there a board extension?
Yeah, it's, it happens with the first...
Yeah, time sign up front.
Yeah, it's almost, you know, through all the transition between communicating with the companies that get the bills out and finding out what's wrong and all this stuff, this is when you get that two days that you're trying to just get it out. By the time it's out, it's too late, they have to tell the lobby it's not out. So, it just kind of, it started like what you just said about the engine and it happens when we expect it to happen. Uh, same first time, yes, and Shirley can, uh, witness to that, she works with Nico in years, so little habit for it. There was something really, and I appreciate Rob's concern, you know, kind of, yeah, in the future, we're trying to get our, we're working now, as you see here and all that technology. So, part of the technology that we have now is trying to deliver messages to the customers and all this stuff with my company's help here that we are really improving. We're getting a lot of our phones on the internet that you don't have to come to the city hall here, you can get it on the internet. We pay now, you can pay online now, you'll bill, so that's something we offer now for a long time. So, we are keeping up with the technology. One of them is trying to deliver messages, like in the morning, you get emails, you get messages, you know, telling me what's going on, there is something outside, we're working on it and all this stuff.
Maybe, Ash, what, what you and Mike need to develop here is, is, and maybe you're already into this, but when something like that happens, whether it's with the council or with the board, um, set up some kind of communication process where this is what happens, we go to the radio station, we go to Facebook, we go to emails, um, and, and get that message out.
And that's exactly what we were working on right now, developing our phone system to have a message, to respond to everybody calling and then go to the website, put in messages, you see? So, like I said, uh, my is working, is being there, doing an awesome job, trying to get that whole technology and I didn't meet with Chum this far, I just gave you a good comment. My company has a good ideas about what we have here, it's going to feel, and between him and us trying to improve the system, we are in the process now of getting there. Right now, we have laptops going to view now that you can get anything you want on the site, right on your phone.
Uh, Shirley, did you get calls about this?
I had people stop me, you know, about outside and there's...
I, yeah. So, it makes sense to me.
I saw people asking about it.
And I guess, and I, I, I don't mean to be critical, but I want to, um, and I want to thank you, Bob, for coming and telling us about that, because I'm not on Facebook, I, I'm too electronically challenged for it. I appreciate you coming, Bob, and telling us about this kind of thing because then we can react to it. But when I come to a board meeting every month, um, it's usually these two guys sitting in the front, they're the only ones here. So, if there's rate payers that are upset about things like that, bring it in here and talk to us about it. So, Warren, you have a comment?
You guys are anxious to get home, have supper, sure, but based on not here, when Xenia comes back, I just had a couple of comments. One, if I could have asked Yuri something, and maybe it's all obvious to you because you have the letter that he sent out and, and I don't, maybe that's something that you could put on the city website, the packet that you guys get like you do for the city council, that would be helpful. People like me that are interested could find out ahead of time, but what I couldn't understand from what he was explaining was, he said, their, their administrative cost of providing water had actually gone down and they were just passing on the thirty-nine cent increase that they were getting from, from Water Works, yet their cost service study said that their actual cost of providing water to you got sixty-three cents, well, I didn't...
It makes it sound like a loss, is that what you're trying to say?
Well, it makes it sound like a loss, huh? I would like to know, where, where did that, I mean, it sounds to me like if, if their cost of, you know, if their overall overhead is going down, maybe because they're selling more gallons and it's going to increase cost, uh, you know, maybe there's something else in there that, that I didn't, those are just the elements that he laid out.
From senior standpoint, not from Water Works.
Maybe, right. I mean, maybe it's the cost of pumping it uphill, you know, all, all the water falls up here in Stewart and then runs down to Des Moines and they treat it and then they pump it back up.
Their, their position is, they're selling water to Stewart at a lower cost than what it should be. And if that's an accurate calculation, I'm not sure, but that's, I think that's the position they're trying to take. They're saying that they're going to be a break, is what they're attempting to rationalize.
And we're still grumbling about it, right?
Right.
That was one thing. The, the other thing, and just to dovetail with John's comments, I agree, I, I think it would be a step forward for, uh, the formation of a regional water authority rather than just having Des Moines Water Works dictate the, the price that, that all these customers are paying for, for the water that's coming out of there. But to piggyback on that, I, I think Stewart and, and maybe the ethanol plant too should have a seat at the table on Xenia. I don't know if that's been pursued.
Yeah, that's a great point.
But, uh, we're, we're a significant customer and, and, and I'm a, I'm a customer of Xenia out of the farm.
Well, you didn't get rate increases last time.
I, uh, I, I sure would not like to see nine percent rate increase.
We can share some of ours.
I, I'm paying thirty-five dollars a thousand, so, um, you know, tack on ten percent to that, uh, you'd, you'd see really unhappy customers. But I don't know what the process is even to get on Xenia's board. Uh, you know, it's, it's probably in the fine print somewhere.
Well, the, the first thing you got to do is ask.
Well, uh, I, uh, if, if there's something I can do to help with that, because I think we should have a seat at the table. Anyway, those are my two points. Thanks for all you guys doing, appreciate it all.
Ash, can I say something?
Yeah.
I, I would just like to say thank you guys for representing the citizens here. It was very refreshing to see people hold the Xenia representatives' feet to the fire, so to speak, and really beyond the, um, looking out for our best interests, you know, and, and working together, even listening to, to Bob and his concerns, you know, and taking that away because really there's no, nothing that's small enough not to be looked at. And I really appreciate it, I see you guys are working together, uh, on the, on our behalf. So, I just want to say I was pretty impressed with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah. One thing. Go ahead. I'd like to study this, like, this cost increase more and look at, I don't know if you want to, you've mentioned working together with the city side on projects and stuff, I'd like to spend some time outside of that and doing it on my own is a movie, it's going to be a pleasure, but, I mean, you guys are helping with that.
I'm fine with that.
I'm coming to your office. Just, I mean, outside of the meeting, just, you know, come to your office, look at stuff, asking, you know, check the Albatome or whatever.
Thank you.
And Chip, I'm still working on getting one of the signs up.
It's okay. I have a lot more to add to what Xenia said, but maybe next month is better for that.
Okay.
Thank you for putting those tables together.
Yeah, really.
I'm ready to change those. So, so critical that two...
Oh, go ahead. I'm, I'm going to change those two. I think there's one, their rate was four forty instead of four thirty-five for the most recent adjustment on their term of the bulk sale, so I'll change that. And then I'm going to add what it's, what it is on a cumulative basis, that them over five years charging SMU versus an SMU charging its local customers. I think that distinction is going to be informative.
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Nothing else, we stand adjourned.